Good evening. It's 7 o'clock and I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox? Mr. Garrick?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
The first item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, which is October 6, 2008.
So moved?
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Stevenson, seconded by Lewis. Is that correct? Any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried. Additions to the agenda. There's been a request that we move the Cunningham Avenue beautification study before the reports of standing committees. Is that okay with everyone, or do we need a motion?
That's fine.
Okay. Because we have a consultant from Indianapolis who needs to get back. Okay. Any other additions to the agenda? Next is petitions and communications. Is there anyone who would like to address the Urbana City Council? Okay. Would you fill out a form, a little card, and give it to the clerk? Kathleen Nagel?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to address the council?
This evening?
Oh, just come on up. And the microphone is the little black here. And just say your name and your address, and please keep your remarks to no longer than five minutes.
My name is Kathleen Nagel. I live at 1702 Lydia Court West in Urbana, Illinois. I am presenting a petition to the Urbana City Council on behalf of the Ridge at Stone Creek Homeowners Association, addressing concerns with the Meyer store adjacent to the Ridge properties. I have 24 signatures with one deleted, which I've already presented to your clerk. I'm calling upon the Noise and Vibrations Ordinance, Chapter 16, Article 1, in general, loud and racious noises, amplified sound, prohibited generally, number six, Section 16-2. It shall be unlawful and a violation of this ordinance for any person responsible, as defined herein, to willfully make, continue, or cause to be made or continued, any loud and racious noise when such noise is audible in any one of the following places. Number seven of this section would apply. If amplified sound when such is audible at the boundary line of the property from which such sound is emanating, the term "boundary line" shall mean... Number A applies. In case of a residential unit in a structure containing more than one residential unit, the boundary line shall be the perimeter of such unit. Residential unit shall be that area under the exclusive use or control of the owner or occupant. The next one is Article 2, specific prohibitions, and that would be Section 16-8 motor vehicles, excessive standing while running. It shall be unlawful for any person to operate any motor of any motor vehicle of a weight in excess of four tons for a consecutive period longer than two minutes while such vehicle is standing on private property and located within 150 feet of property zoned and used for residential purposes. The Meyer store is in violation of this ordinance because of the noise created by the loading dock activities and operations that are on a continuous basis 24/7. This activity takes place just 60.5 feet from the back of the Meyer store to the nearest homeowner's property line. The noise is generated by semi-trucks arriving and leaving, turning, backing up, and unloading with electric-powered forklifts inside the metal truck body. The unloading process continues for two to four hours at a time throughout the day, evening, and nighttime, 12:00 p.m., 2:00 a.m., and 4:00 a.m. In addition to the above noise, the refrigerator trucks are running their units two to four hours at a time. Where there is more than two refrigerator units running at the same time, the noise is very loud, especially during the night. We are asking the truck deliveries stop at 8:00 p.m. We are asking that the trucks be unloaded no later than 10:00 p.m. We are asking that no trucks arrive in the loading dock for deliveries before 8:00 a.m. And we are asking the City Council of Urbana, Illinois, to enforce the noise ordinance. We are asking for a noise bearer wall to be constructed that meets the federal guidelines for noise abatement. We are asking for a wall that is tall enough to screen the entire loading dock, parking lot, back of the store, attaches berm to fence, and extends from Amber Lane to Windsor Road.
Questions? Brandon?
Yeah. I guess if you could just explain what you, as a homeowner or resident... I understand you've kind of explained from the Meyer side what the noises are happening, but explain what your experience of it is and how it impacts you or your neighbors, things that you've heard.
Well, Mr. Bowersox, it impacts our quality of life. It impacts our health. During the night, my homeowner... My property sits the closest, the 60.5 feet from the back... From my property line to the back of the store. The noise resonates, meaning it resounds and reverberates. It is almost continuous, especially throughout the night. And the turning of the trucks, the backing up of the trucks, they come to the edge of the property line to turn, and then they have to back into the loading docks. You have the constant beeping, and you have the constant truck engines, and especially with the refrigerator trucks. And it takes a good two hours to unload those refrigerator trucks. The manager, Mr. Howard, came to my home, as well as his assistant, and as he was sitting in my home, he said, "I can hear the refrigerator trucks running." And that was in the daytime.
Thanks.
Did Meyer offer to do anything to alleviate the problem for you?
What Meyer did was we put up... They put up a plastic vinyl fence, which in no way abates the noise. Actually, I think it makes it worse, because the fence does not go to the berm on Amber. There is a space that the noise resonates around and up over. The fence only goes halfway down the back of the property line, and the fence does not screen the loading dock. You can still see at least a third of the truck over the fence.
Okay. Well, we will certainly have our staff look into it, and we'll follow through on what you're concerned about.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. There's another question. Dennis Roberts.
I just have a question, I guess, about the configuration of the back part of the Meyer's property. I'm sure that there was a consideration for, you know, shielding the dock in some manner. Is there also vegetation back there, which is supposed to mature and help screen the dock area at the east property line along the residential section of that?
As the question, there's vegetation. There's been some trees planted in that area recently at the Lydia Court West Coliseum, yes. There were some trees planted recently, yes.
So, right now, is... Are all the trees and fences in place that were originally proposed for the... To screen the loading dock?
To the best of my knowledge, I believe the answer is yes.
Okay. Thank you.
May I comment on that?
Sure.
Mr. Gray's comment? There's a fence there, but it does not screen the loading dock. So the best thing to do is to come and take a look.
Okay. We'll check it out and see what the plans were originally, if the noise was considered or if this is something that was unexpected, you know, and see what we can do. Yes, Lynn?
Libby Tyler's been quite involved in this, and I think would probably be the... She's not here tonight, but she could address this, but she's been very involved.
We'll talk with Libby Tyler, who's our Community Development Director, because we are concerned about neighbors being impacted.
Right. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Wayne Johnson?
I live at 1810 South Vine Street in Urbana, Illinois. And I lived there for about five years now, and at the time that I... That we moved into that property, it was very much grown up, it was pretty much a jungle. In that period of time, I have taken out 46 trees on those two lots and used the trees to construct some playground equipment, and we constructed a fence around the yard and have done a number of other improvements. And my neighbors have often told me how much better they liked the... Our yard since we've made these changes. Now, you know, you all... I'm sure you all remember from our Constitution, we say that we have the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. But that was a prayer phrase from John Locke, that instead of the pursuit of happiness, he had said the right of property. But Benjamin Franklin advised the use of the pursuit of happiness instead of property. And that governments are established to protect these rights. But in this day and age, it doesn't seem that our greatest threat is through our economy, but it seems that our greatest threat is to our personal freedoms. And those personal freedoms not being... Are not being challenged by some 39-cent dictator in some far-off foreign land, but actually threatened by governments right here at home, who are taking away our personal freedoms. This morning, just before noon, a certain Mr. Aerosmith arrived at my place today to remove some materials from some trees that I had taken down in the yard recently. We have actually two more trees to take down, after which we are planning to grind the branches and stuff into mulch. But Mr. Aerosmith, at more or less at gunpoint, because he called two policemen to the scene, took these materials away, and despite my protestations, I didn't protest to the point that they took me off to jail. Perhaps I should have. I regret it just a little, that I didn't protest that much, but if I were in the jail, I wouldn't be able to talk to you right now. Mr. Aerosmith tells me that the... That there is an ordinance, but he tells me that it's unevenly enforced, that there are other people who have yards, perhaps with more violations than mine, but they're enforcing mine because there's some sorts of complaints that are going on, but no one has come to me with any complaints. In fact, my neighbors say that they like my lawn. I think that this lawn ordinance is very high-handed. It's authoritarian. It's unjust. It's unfriendly. It's unbecoming, a small city in Illinois, and it's certainly unbecoming of the city that I call my city, that I can't do within the confines of my yard, whatever I should see fit if I'm storing wood parts. That should be... I think that's perfectly within my rights. It's amazing, this morning, you know, truth is stranger than fiction. This morning, I was reading an article about some people in some towns in California that have started to actually turn their yards into gardens, rather than having these, what I call, well, they're monotonous, stupid, Euclidean plots of well-cut grass. I think those kinds of lawns are very boring, and they're ecologically unsound. They don't produce anything. And how much better would it be if everyone had a garden and raised some squash and some beans and this sort of thing? But apparently, that would be, if people did that, that would be a violation of the ordinances in Urbana. Mr. Thoreau had said that unjust laws exist. Should we be content to obey them, or should we endeavor to amend them? I think amendment here would probably be a good idea. Or should we then obey them until we have succeeded in amendment? Or should we transgress them at once? I actually like the idea of transgressing them at once, and if it displeases Mr. Aerosmith, it pleases me all the more. However, there are other people, I'm sure, that are in the same boat as me, that wanting to do things in their lawns, that they're not permitted to in the city of Urbana because of some ridiculous ordinance that says that a lawn should look like this or it should look like that. I don't think that it's the city of Urbana's business, what a person does within the confines of their lawn. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address the City Council? Okay. I don't believe we have any old business. I would like to say, I've been asked to say, that the Halloween hours this year will be from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. That's October 31st. So let's move...
Oh, and I have a...
Yes. Lynn Barnes.
I'd like to say that the individuals of southeast Urbana who have experienced a brand-new lighting, near Mumford and McHenry and in that area, are very appreciative, and they wanted me to express to you all thank you for putting it on the priority list.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. Let's have the presentation on the Cunningham Avenue beautification study. This is Stefan Lubke?
Yes.
From CBA.
Thank you, and good evening, Council. Again, my name is Stefan Lubke. I'm with CBA. We're a landscape architecture firm out of Indianapolis. And on behalf of Farnsworth Group and Second Globe, we thank you for giving us the opportunity to make tonight a presentation of basically the culmination of about 10 months' worth of work, that we've been working with the steering committee and several members of the council and mayor with... On this Cunningham Avenue beautification. And again, this is the culmination. This is the final concept, kind of the design concept that we have prepared, and we are just about in a position to turn over the final report to the committee for distribution, to you all for review, and for use in dealing with business owners and that type of thing. So the primary goal of the project was to increase the corridor's redevelopment potential, multimodal use, and further enhance its important connection to downtown. Obviously, Cunningham Avenue is one of the strongest, best corridors, entry corridors into the city of Urbana from I-74. So we wanted to provide and develop a concept that would further enhance that. The study area that we looked at is obviously Cunningham Avenue between Airport Road and University Avenue. We looked at all of the major intersections along that corridor, as well as the areas in between the intersections, and really identified opportunities where we could enhance the corridor wherever we could. The design process, we went through data and corridor information collection. We did a pretty exhaustive market analysis, research on the market, the economic market of Urbana and the population. The stakeholder and public input was pretty exhaustive. We came to Urbana on many occasions and gave not only the public, but also stakeholders, business owners ample opportunity to come and kind of see what we were doing and give us input on what they feel should happen in the corridor. Because at the end of the day, we, you know, this is your corridor, you have to live with it, and we want you to be proud of it, so we want our design to respond to your input. We then went into preliminary planning and design after some initial stakeholder and public input sessions back in March, and came back to you... Came back to the public with a preliminary design, which was presented. There were some positive reactions, there were some negative reactions. We took those and created the overall design concept that I'm going through with you this evening. That concept includes the drawings that you see behind me here, as well as some design vocabulary, site furnishings, light pole treatments, public art elements. And then we also wanted to, as we do on every project, really kind of ground this in reality and figure out, okay, how much could this potentially cost? Because at the end of the day, we obviously, we all know that this is... We don't all design in a vacuum. We have to be able to build this thing. So we broke it into manageable pieces and parts and assigned some value to that, and I will go over that at the end of the presentation. I mentioned the stakeholder public input, some of the highlights. You can see the dates there on the left of the screen. Those are the dates that we were here throughout the year, talking with public stakeholders, just trying to get as much input as we possibly could. Some of the strengths that we heard for the corridor, obviously the I-74 access. The corridor is home to many viable businesses. Obviously, the high traffic counts is a strength of the corridor. You have a lot of businesses can gain a lot of visibility. It's an excellent main entrance into Urbana. There are opportunities here to compete with the champagne businesses, obviously with the Prospect Road to the west. They've taken a lot of the retail business away from this area of Urbana, and this corridor has the opportunity to bring some of that back. And not necessarily the chain stores, but more of the niche retail, which we've identified. And then there's an opportunity to make a really strong entry statement at I-74, which is really your front door, front door to the world, actually. Some of the weaknesses we heard, upkeep of some local businesses is undesirable. There's a lack of diversity and character, and there's really not much continuity throughout the corridor. Limited sidewalks, and the corridor is generally unsafe for pedestrians. There's really no opportunity for bicycle use, or safe bicycle use, I should say. There are too many curb cuts throughout the corridor, and too many billboards. It's just very visually blighted. And like I said, these are all kind of highlights. We received quite a bit of input, and I've tried to hit the most important points that we kind of heard time and again when we were here. We did, like I said, an exhaustive market analysis for the project, and went through some research on the economics of Urbana, as well as the data for the population and that type of thing. You have a number of influences that are acting on the corridor. Obviously, the fact that it's a primary interest into Urbana is a huge influence in terms of what you do along that corridor. I mentioned the retail shopping district on Prospect Avenue, which has sucked a lot of that commercial retail business away from this area of the city, and you really have the opportunity to bring a lot of that back, but bring it back in a way that could be strong for Urbana, like the niche retail, the auto-oriented types of services that are a little bit more unique to this area, and really take advantage of the fact that the corridor is auto-oriented. The adjacent neighborhoods and multifamily developments that are close to the corridor itself provides an excellent opportunity to create neighborhood-serving retail. You could create a neighborhood-serving retail district that focuses and caters to a lot of those types of folks that are, you know, living close by, and they want to run down to the store for a quick thing or two. They want to run their car in for service or whatever. They have an opportunity to do that, and by providing pedestrian access and circulation and bicycle circulation and access, just further enhances that quality of life and that opportunity for people to reach those places without getting in their cars and driving. Some of the historical context, obviously, the corridor used to be a thoroughfare between Urbana and Rantoul, but with the I-74 development, that obviously changed everything and created a more vehicular-oriented type of corridor. The market characteristics, the highlights for Urbana, obviously, we discovered that population of Urbana is growing, which is a good sign. You have about 40,000 residents. There's a high proportion of single occupant homes, a higher proportion of single occupant homes compared to the state of Illinois, which was also interesting. And then your mean average age, you have a young population. Your mean average age of Urbana is about 24 to 25, whereas the mean average age of Illinois is 36. So again, an interesting find. You have a young population, so again, something you can capitalize on in terms of development and business opportunities. The theme that we came up with early on is kind of grounded in the fact that Urbana was founded within a prairie or in an agrarian landscape, and we came up with a theme, progress from the prairie. You know, Urbana is... Has been progressing over the years and advancing over the years and developing, and is an up-and-coming community, and we wanted to capitalize on the fact that, you know, you're making progress, but you're making it from the roots of an agrarian landscape. And some of the design considerations that we looked at early on were sustainability, which we feel is a very strong point that we like to emphasize in everything we design. Obviously, things need to be sustainable, from not only a maintenance standpoint, but from an aesthetic standpoint, and from a development standpoint. You know, you're going to get new development here. You want to sustain that development. You want to sustain those businesses and keep them here. Repetitive forums throughout the corridor, emphasis on the arts, gateway opportunities, pedestrian connectivity and safety, interpretive educational opportunities, potential appropriate future land uses, traffic considerations, design character, integration of corridor amenities. All of this plays into a vital corridor that is multi-layered, that has lots of opportunities for business to come in and locate and feel good about locating here. The design concept that we came up with involves a multi-layered solution that includes integral colored concrete at the intersections, which is low maintenance, but it is a highly durable material that lasts for long periods of time. We've used it in other communities and had great success with it. Native shade and ornamental flowering trees at the intersections for color and interest, and obviously, further enhancing the environment of Urbana. Raised decorative planters at key intersections, again, for added visual interest. Six-foot-wide sidewalks, again, providing a large enough sidewalk for people to feel comfortable walking two people abreast down the sidewalk. A 10-foot-wide multi-use trail north of Kenyon. This, we feel, is an integral part of connecting the north side of I-74 to the main corridor, which is... The majority of the corridor, which is south of I-74. By providing that connection, for allowing people to use not only the sidewalk for foot traffic, but also bicycle traffic, so that becomes an integral piece. Integral public art elements. Urbana is focused on the public arts, and we are... We feel that this is an integral part of the corridor and should be a high point of emphasis in terms of spurring development to locate here, providing, again, visual interest and creating a unique corridor that expresses Urbana as a unique community, not just the same old community on the same old highway and wherever. Decorative low-screen walls to screen some potential harsh views of parking lot areas and soften those views. Native prairie plantings at I-74. And some of this I will talk at here in a minute. And then other elements, like a future mini park or trailhead at Saline Ditch. We also looked at opportunities to use this corridor to connect to future corridors and future greenways that could be developed citywide. So it's not just this corridor being a spine on its own. It's obviously going to eventually fit into an overall matrix or network of trail systems, hopefully, in the near future. The concept plan itself, again, we looked at all of the major intersections along the corridor, looked at visually enhancing those with plant material, as well as integral-colored concrete. Just kind of page through these. This is a view looking south at Country Club Perkins. It's a character sketch that shows you what could potentially happen at the intersection. And more specifically, at the southwest corner, looking at a public art possibility or opportunity location there, which could create a really nice, strong statement for the city of Urbana, as well as, again, visually providing that enhancement. Looking at integral color, subtle color changes in the pavement, again, something that doesn't visually distract motorists, but provides enough interest that says, hey, this is a special place. The I-74 interchange, again, we feel is a very strong opportunity for providing that entrance into the community. It is your front doorstep to the world, and again, providing some berming, native plant material. Again, something that's low maintenance, that the city doesn't have to spend a lot of money or time maintaining, but something that you get a lot of bang for your buck out of. And the nice thing about this is it fits right in with IDOT's plan in terms of what they're doing at other interstate interchanges and interstate rights and ways. They're going into some of these areas and allowing the planting of native plant material for added visual interest. for added visual interest. The public art elements, I'll just touch on those briefly. Again, they play off that whole theme of progress from the prairie. They're playing off the prairie grass theme primarily, using the aspect of the fact that, you know, the settlers came here and developed a community, so playing off that whole connection of where people are meeting in an agrarian landscape, in the idea of bringing the house and the grass together. And the small photo that you see in the slide there on the upper left, you can see kind of a subtle reference to a home in that motif. So it's celebrating the combination or the coming together of nature and community that the settlers built upon when they arrived here. Some typical street sections, again, we're not really changing dramatically the cross-section of the street. We're maintaining the same number of traffic lanes and the turn lane, but we're identifying opportunities where there's a possibility to do some bike lanes at the edges of the right-of-way, or edges of the roadway, creating a small planted area between the bike lane and then a six-foot sidewalk at the very edge of the right-of-way itself. And then in some areas where we have the room, doing some low screen walls to screen some of the undesirable views of parking lots or what have you. Again, another quick cross-section south of Country Club and Perkins. And then at the I-74 interchange, taking advantage of the existing medians that you have and raising those medians in certain areas with raised planters to, again, create that visual interest, create that statement, and then maintaining the existing road cross-section. And then, the other point I made earlier, creating that 10-foot wide multi-use path. We envision that probably on the east side of the roadway. You have a lot of room right now to do that, so you really don't have to acquire that much right-of-way, if any, to do that. So you really have a great opportunity here to create a connection there. Some of the design vocabulary, again, the walls that I mentioned, you see in there, the motif on some of the walls is, again, picking up that native prairie grass theme and carrying that through. The site furnishings, we looked at a couple of different bench options. The one bench that you see in the upper left is what you currently have in the downtown area. That is an option. You could just extend that further out. These could be located at bus stop locations, other key locations out in front of some businesses, what have you. Light poles, you know, with light poles, you can do something as simple as a really kind of small detail element on the pole itself, which could go a long way to saying, again, this is, Urbana is someplace special. It's not just your everyday city that has everyday light poles. And so, again, further enhancing that visual character of the corridor. We also worked with the committee. I personally walked all of the corridor and looked at all of the driveways, and working with the committee members, we identified about 32 or 33 driveways that have the potential of being closed in one fashion or another. There are quite a few of these that are old and outdated, that are not being used anymore. A number of businesses have excessive driveway entrances and exits. So again, this further acts to reduce the congestion, the vehicular congestion in the corridor, the delays, the roadway capacity, it can increase, and also reduce the visual clutter, as well as improving the safety. The more driveway crossings you have, the more people have to start, the more pedestrians have to start and stop, because they have to be aware of, you know, if I'm crossing a driveway, is someone going to be whipping in off the street in their car and not thinking about me as a pedestrian, or someone on a bicycle? And then I mentioned the probable costs. Obviously, we want to ground this thing in reality and provide you some sense of what the potential cost of these improvements, what they could entail. So we broke it down into a number of different sections. The north section, Airport Road to the I-74 interchange, about half a million to $650,000. These, again, are very rough ballpark numbers. The I-74 interchange area, 2.1 to 2.6 million. Again, that, if you do just the planters south of the interchange, it's obviously not going to be 2.1 million dollars. But if you start to look at the entire interchange, or you start to look at larger improvements in the interchange, you're obviously going to be in that range or at the high end of that range. Kenyon Road to the Saline Ditch, 2.3 to 2.7. Saline Ditch to the Railroad Bridge, 1.7 to 2.2. And I say the Railroad Bridge, what we did was, we saw the Railroad Bridge as an opportunity to look at that area as another chance or opportunity for public art. That is the main entrance into downtown. It's kind of where you start to get a sense that you're entering the downtown business district. So we extended our view a little bit south of University and included that in our study. So the total probable cost range here, 6.6 to 8.2 million. Again, these are very rough, round, ballpark numbers. We did look at, early on in the process, an optional roundabout at Country Club and Perkins. There's a possibility to do it there. We have had several conversations with IDOT and other stakeholders and committee members, and the reality is, it probably, most likely, won't happen, because IDOT doesn't like to introduce these new traffic elements into areas where you have lots of high volumes of traffic. And this being a state highway, obviously, they would kind of turn away from that rather than support it. So, but we didn't want to throw that out as an option. We wanted to keep it in and say, you know, this is a potential for the future. You know, you have a lot of these being done in lots of places around the country. They function very well. They actually reduce the amount of fuel that's used, because there's less stopping and starting. But again, this is something that, you know, certainly would be a stretch to do for a state highway, especially in a high urban or a high-traffic area as you have here. But we wanted to keep that in, and we associated some costs there, 980,000 to 1.2 million. So, you know, this kind of concludes our presentation. Again, this is the culmination of about 10 months' worth of work that started back in January with stakeholder input, going into some preliminary design, and then final design. And then we actually presented to a number of different stakeholders, including the North Cunningham Business Group, which we presented to in May. And I will let you know that they were very supportive of the concept and the design. They were very excited about the design. The two questions that kind of came up was, the first one, obviously, what is it going to cost? And number two, what are we going to do first? You know, they want to know what's going to happen first, because it affects them directly as business owners. So with that, I'll open it up to comments and questions.
Charlie?
Sorry, I have six or seven questions here for you and comments. And I stop, and I think we've got three interstate entrances to the city, Lincoln, Cunningham, and University. Do we have traffic counts for each of those intersections?
I believe we do. The engineers looked at that. They looked primarily, though, at the traffic counts for this corridor and the University Avenue, Cunningham Avenue intersection.
Because what I'm wondering about is, you know, do we have more people entering the city from Lincoln, from Cunningham, from University? That's, and so, I guess my comment there is, you know, I'd like to know those numbers. Would we want to incorporate some of the design aspects that are proposed here for North Cunningham to those other two intersections, for example? You know, a unified theme, you're entering Urbana, for example, to each entrance. At the south end of this, we've got basically the Boneyard Creek study and the plans for the Boneyard Creek. How does what you're proposing to and around University and to the Railroad Bridge sort of mesh with some of the Boneyard plans? Have you looked at those at all?
Yes, we looked at those early on, and obviously, our concept and theme and design would tie in directly with that corridor. Because again, as I mentioned, this is not a, this project is not an island. It doesn't stand on its own. It's part of an overall network throughout Urbana, and you have a number of different projects going on, the Boneyard being one, the possibility of Saline Ditch being a future greenway connection to the parks to the east. Again, we saw that as an opportunity to use this corridor to start to respond to some of those elements and create and enhance some of those connections.
I should add that I'm really impressed with this. Great concept up and down. I hope we can get somewhere close to doing this at some point. Going back to the issue of roundabouts, that keeps coming up. I've got some bicyclist friends that are real encouraging of roundabouts. There's a roundabout planned for St. Mary's Road, as I understand it, in the future. How does, what's the experience at high densities? That's where they tend to break down, in my experience, when I've traveled overseas.
Yeah, the problem with it is, there aren't a whole lot of examples in this country to study, because, you know, there's some, they've done them on the coasts, but they haven't done a lot of them in the Midwest in terms of the high-traffic capacities. And that's, you know, until they're actually done and in those areas and they're studied, that data is kind of hard to find. We do have some data, and I can get that from the engineers. They looked into that briefly as we were starting to look at the roundabout concept. But again, we didn't spend a whole lot of time researching the, a lot of the data, because it is just a concept at this point. It's something that we wanted to, excuse me, throw out there and create a possibility that maybe that roundabout could spur other roundabouts along the corridor and start to create a rhythm.
I spent 20 minutes at a roundabout this summer, stuck in rush hour traffic, so I'm not a big fan.
Charlie, could I just interrupt a bit? Carmel, is that how you pronounce it, Indiana?
Mm-hmm.
Has a lot of roundabouts. Do they have anything that's comparable to this Perkins?
They're looking at incorporating them with some of the higher-traffic thoroughfares. They haven't done it yet, but they're looking to do that. Again, a lot of them are in, you know, two-lane situations.
They work great there. I mean, you know, the two-lane situation where it's just one lane each direction, they work very, very well.
Well, and actually, this last weekend, I was in Wisconsin, and they had roundabouts actually at the bottom of some off-ramps in an interchange, and those are actually four-lane each, you know, two lanes both directions, and they work quite well.
Yeah, it's the density, it's when you get to, you know, rush hour, that sort of thing, that's where I've seen it break down, and that's my concern. Continuing that theme, that, you know, everybody talks about bicycle and pedestrian access. Clearly, getting some of the driveways down helps a lot. One of the issues, if you try to ride a bicycle on a sidewalk, is the number of intersections you get, have all the conflicts with vehicles and coming in and out and that sort of thing. But it's still very dangerous for a bicyclist to be on a sidewalk when there are a lot of breaks like that. I mean, that's the whole point of putting the bike lanes on the road. Are you proposing a three-lane road diet or a five-lane configuration with bike lanes as part of this, from University to Kenyon?
Yes.
Okay, so it'd be five lanes with two bike lanes?
Correct.
Oh, okay, so essentially, okay.
Correct.
So, yeah, because it's not clear for, I can see the five lanes on the drawing, and so there's enough room for another five feet on each side for bikes?
Yes, in several areas, we found that there's enough room to accommodate that by reducing some of that parkway width between the back of the curb and the sidewalk.
Okay, so could we really connect University all the way to Kenyon?
It's a possibility, yes.
Okay, great, okay. I like the concept of the prairie stock lights in, you know, down here by the bridge, for example, and I could see doing that as part of a theme in a couple other places to sort of put it all together. My only concern there would be that there, in the current terminology, bug-compatible, backlight, uplight, glare issues come into play. So, yeah, it's bug, backlight, uplight, glare, just remember that. That's what we want, as opposed to full cutoff. You know, the old category was, you know, full cutoff. We want minimal uplight sort of lighting, and I don't know exactly what you had envisioned for those kinds of lights.
Those would be primarily downlights, I think, is what the artist had originally envisioned. The fixture, the sculptural piece at the interchange, we envision uplighting that to create a dramatic statement from down below, so that it obviously would not be impeding the interstate or highway traffic up above. The lights would be located in such a way that it would uplight it from below and create that dramatic statement.
And I assume we're using LEDs for all this, right?
They are, believe it or not, they're looking into that for a lot of their new pieces. They're looking at LED, and they're seeing great strides in that industry.
Okay, and finally, a sort of a general comment. As we look at, we talked about litter barrels in different locations. Really, I think we, as a community, need to be thinking in terms of recycling bins combined with litter barrels at all these locations, including downtown, Phyllor Road, that sort of thing. So as we move forward, I just want to get that concept in people's heads. So thank you very much. I think it's a great, a great design.
Thank you.
Brandon?
Yeah, thanks again. I agree. First with Charlie, yes, litter barrels and recycling bins together makes a lot of sense. Thanks also for getting community buy-in. I think from showing up tonight, it's clear you've had a lot of conversations with folks along the corridor, business owners and stakeholders, and that they understand the project and are excited about it, too. And when can we start? So I know one of your big questions was, do we start at I-74, or do we start at the downtown end, or somewhere in the middle? And that came up earlier this evening. I guess, as a council member to kind of weigh in, it seems to me that it makes sense to start wherever there is adjacent business. I mean, I can see pros and cons either way, but if we have some project along the way that's going to be a redevelopment opportunity, we should start there. And it's okay with me if we tell developers, well, we're going to move ahead with the plan, and we don't know which, especially of the three big segments, which of those three we're going to start with first, but if you can bring us a development project here, well, that's where we'll start. So I support this and hope we can get started soon. I have a question, I guess, for Ryan, which is, what's our next step? Do we immediately move ahead with contracting for the engineering phase? And do we need to do the engineering just on one of the segments and pick a segment relatively soon? Or do we engineer it all, or do we wait a while, once this report is done, before moving ahead with the project?
Well, I don't think we're ready to get to that point yet, just because a lot of this is going to depend on how TIF 4, how the TIF 4 fund increases over time. It's not, this project isn't specifically budgeted in TIF 4 yet, because it's going to depend a lot on how development occurs in there, and how much revenue is generated from new projects that happen, and then, of course, the natural increase over time of the existing properties that are in there. So really, the budget's going to determine the timing of this whole project, and as far as the phasing of it goes, we're going to need a little bit more discussion as far as, you know, where do we start once we do have funds? If there is a project, a large project that happens, and somebody's interested in making a large investment somewhere in the corridor, that could dictate, you know, where we start, where we initiate a first phase. And otherwise, another way to go about it is taking specific elements of the concept and doing, say, one element at a time, like starting with all the street lighting, starting with sidewalks, starting with, you know, street furniture, starting with maybe one or two or three of the intersections, and doing the colored square concrete. So there's different ways to go about it. Any of those could work, but again, you know, it's really going to depend on how development occurs and how the funds build in the TIF, and we're just going to have to prioritize based on that.
Okay, thanks.
Robert?
Maybe this is a question for staff, and what is the impact of the University of Avenue corridor study that's going to be taking place here soon?
Well, Stefan's firm is actually working on that also, in addition to this corridor. So I'm sure that they're going to, they're working a way to tie the two together somehow along there. And I do believe that that corridor, the Urbana part, actually goes all the way to five points, does it not?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm sure that, you know, since it's the same firm, they're probably going to be using maybe some of the same themes or same elements.
Well, I'm assuming you use the same design concept to carry it on through University, right?
Well, it's a little bit different corridor, obviously. And there's, you know, you're, that corridor is spanning two cities, and so there's a lot of other factors that factor in. But as Ryan said, you know, the benefit that that committee has is, we've done the Cunningham, and now we can kind of start to tie the two together and further, you know, further, bring that enhancement further into the city, and really start to enhance and provide an extended concept, if you will, that carries those treatments further in. And again, it's not just Cunningham. This becomes a catalyst and an impetus for the rest of the city to really start to This becomes a catalyst and an impetus for the rest of the city to really start to revitalize and hopefully start to spur the connections, the bicycle connections and the greenway connections to other parts of town, and not just do it in one area. So it just, it all starts to kind of hold together.
I would hope that the concept would carry over Wright Street.
Right, and kind of to add, to answer what Councilman Smythe's question was before, his first question, he asked about the, how the traffic counts differ at the interchange, the three different interchanges that we have in Urbana. Actually, Cunningham and Lincoln Avenue are actually pretty close in traffic counts. The University Avenue is a little bit lower. But the major difference, of course, in the reason why we're doing the Cunningham corridor first, one, because I think it needs the most as far as beautification and infrastructure improvements. And second of all, we have the funding mechanism there in TIF 4 to be able to fund it. So it's certainly, the concept that we're doing here could be, we could study the other corridors, and the same concepts could be applied to those as time allows and as budget allows. But, you know, it'll depend on, you know, we would need some kind of funding mechanism for those other two.
We have some information already, but that's great.
For those other two interchanges.
Dennis?
Well, I'm personally very interested in this, because a lot of my ward is along the eastern side of this street. And one of the things that I liked in the presentation that you gave at 5:30 to the people before the council started today was your comments about the connectivity between Airport Road and to the south, past through the interchange area of the interstate and into, along Cunningham Avenue. Because, and part of the program that, part of the suggestions that I guess you're making is to lay the sidewalk, a multi-use sidewalk between those areas. I know that I've seen a lot of people walking along the interstate entrances in the grassway, and there's a, you know, they're cutting a path, you know, a footpath. It shows that there are people that are moving back and forth to Farm and Fleet, and maybe the O'Briens, Autopark, and other residences up in the northern part of the city, and they're trying to get into town. So I think that's an important connectivity section. I actually think that we might look at the interchange, the interstate interchange, soon, partly because probably achieving the planting garden effect that is suggested would be a very feasible, large expression early on. We'd probably get iDOT help with the beautification process, because they have interstate and manor hideaway funding available at this time. And I rather, I've been in towns where there was very significant and large roadside art on the interstate, and I'm thinking particularly of Albuquerque, New Mexico, which, as you are heading along the east-west, eastbound interstate, and you're leaving, you're approaching the heart of the city, the wash has been capped and covered. At one point, it enters, enters an underground channel, and the surface top of it, which was a cement flat top, has been used for plantings and 10-foot pots that are made out of ceramics and decorated in, you know, appropriate for the different Indian tribes, you know, pottery. So they're very impressive, huge pieces of art as you head toward the river. And also Denver, Colorado, has a lot of very significant bridge work, artwork done. As you enter neighborhoods, you're going through underpasses that have ceramic tiles on all sides that make it very decorative. So I think it would be a very striking, it might be one, it might be one of the more, bigger-ticket items to accomplish, but it might, would certainly be an eye-stopper and a significant contribution to this city's presence along the highway. I was going to ask also about the, the streetlight decorative items. It looked like the, are you suggesting to install a new kind of streetlight with the extended arm that has the decorative motif as a support element? Or are we looking at somehow retrofitting existing posts to upscale them?
We were actually looking at putting in a light fixture similar to what you have in the downtown here, in terms of the mast arm. And I hate to use the word "cobra head," but they are cobra heads, obviously. But the nice aspect about them is they're painted darker. They don't, they don't stand out as far as their color. The decorative elements that you see on there are applied. They're not really structural in any means. They're more of a decorative type of statement that could, again, be a very cost-effective way to, again, create that next layer of enhancement.
Tell me a little bit about the, the design aspect on the major intersections. I rather like the fact that as you approach the city downtown, you go through a series of specially paved.
Yes.
Intersection areas. The only question I had about the, the design, and I think it's rather attractive, is whether having curved elements would suggest to drivers turn lanes. And I'm just wondering if there was a certain visual confusion with directional intent versus decorative intent.
And Dennis, you were in some of the earlier meetings and presentations, and I think we, you know, we discussed that aspect at length and on a number of different occasions. And it would have to be studied further in terms of the overall design and how that design factors in. But quite honestly, if you put yourself in a vehicle, and we all drive every day, when you're turning through an intersection, you're not looking at the pavement. You're looking ahead of you, and you're looking where you're driving. So the subtle, excuse me, the subtle treatments that we do on the pavement are going to really be a non-issue in our mind. And we spoke with our engineering brethren, they feel the same way.
Okay.
It almost becomes a non-issue, because unlike a pedestrian and a person on a bicycle, you're not really looking at the pavement as you're driving. You're looking ahead of you, you're looking to where you're turning, and you're looking at what's going on around you, up and above the pavement. So if we can do it in such a way that it has subtle color changes, but still provides some visual interest, we feel it'll go a long way to not only creating that rhythm that you're talking about as you're driving into the downtown from 74, but again, it creates that unique statement about Urbana that says, this is a special place. This is a place that cares about what it's conveying to the community, it cares about its appearance and image, and it cares about, you know, its businesses and keeping its businesses. And it's not just any old, same-old town with the same old intersections, you know, from street to street. I mean, we've all been in great, you know, in communities around the country that have these enhancements. And put yourself, you know, back in those communities, and how did you feel when you were driving through those areas? I mean, I'm sure those people are very proud of what they have and what they're conveying to the community. So anything we can do from a, from an enhancement standpoint to create that, it's just going to further enhance the corridor. So that's what we tried to convey with treating each intersection as you enter the downtown off of I-74, is creating that similar treatment, which creates a rhythm, but it also creates continuity, visual continuity, that further strengthens not only the vertical elements that are consistent, but it also creates that horizontal treatment and connection and continuity.
I really like the idea of using vegetation to add color to the street scene. And generally, I think it's a very good plan. It looks like it's, you're not requiring us to create so many new elements that, I mean, it's going to be expensive, because it's a very long stretch of road. That's one aspect of it. But it seems like you're just putting in place rather some fairly minimal aspects of change. Probably the, maybe the most potentially useful, and as far as new construction goes, would be the low-side walls. That would be a new element of construction. But the fact that they would screen some of the parking areas, make them beautified, seems very positive to me. So I thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you.
No other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Drive safely. Okay, let's move back. Reports of standing committees, we've had some people waiting quite a long while on the item D, the resolution for the Chinese goose. Would you like to do that one first?
Sure.
Charlie?
From last week's committee of the whole, resolution number 2008-10-022R, resolution allowing a memorial plaque to the memory of the Chinese goose of Crystal Lake Park for the committee, I so move.
Second.
Does anybody need to hear the resolution?
There's a typo. Interested in typos?
I assume we fixed typo.
Okay, on number one, second line, it should read commemorate the memory, rather than to commemorative. Okay? Is there a motion?
We've got a motion, right?
Oh, somebody made a motion. Who made the motion?
I moved it from committee.
Okay. So who seconded it?
Dennis or me?
Either Lynn or I. You could say Lynn can do it.
Okay, Lynn.
Heather had a question.
Okay, any comments?
Yeah, I do have a comment. I have had some neighbors call me specifically about this. I live in Behringer Commons, where there are four lakes, and we had a huge problem with the geese and what they're leaving behind. And many of my constituents are concerned about the health of what these geese are leaving behind. And while I'm sure that this goose, this Chinese goose, meant a lot to the people that went to Crystal Lake on a daily basis, I think that what my constituents were telling me and where I'm coming from is that we don't want to get in the habit of not letting wildlife be wildlife. And the other thing that I've heard constituents tell me is that we're, that people are asking to commemorate a goose, while there are many people, human beings, that have meant a lot to the community, who have served on the Urbana Park District. Oscar Adams is a great example. And we don't have a, while their Urbana High School gym is named after him, there's not a plaque in the park commemorating him. So my vote is no on this. I think that there are a lot more important things that I believe the city of Urbana should be tackling than to commemorate the life of a Chinese goose.
Okay, Brandon, you got your hand up?
Yeah, I mean, I guess that is a good point. I would say my only response to that is that I still support this and think if there's other important people, other important people who've contributed to this town, that they deserve recognition, too. I mean, that I'm about a town that celebrates its history. Like, I love in St. Louis, you can walk down the street and see plaques of all the people who've done something in the world, movie stars and whatever, who are known for making a difference in the world, who came from that neighborhood of St. Louis. And I think that kind of thing, celebrating people that were important here and important on a state or national level, is great. And we should do more things to commemorate stuff that's special about Urbana and have plaques or markers to celebrate historic sites. So I say the more, the merrier, and I hope this is just one of many that we'll see.
Charlie?
I think it's also important to point out that this is being privately funded. We're simply allowing it to be placed on a city bridge. But Heather's point about geese being a problem is definitely there. Wildlife like that should not be fed and encouraged, really, but at the same time, this particular animal was very different for this community. But as part of the whole discussion of this, we also are expecting recommendations from the Art Commission on a plaque program along the lines that Brandon and Robert and Dennis have been talking about for some time, and Danielle, too, for the last couple of years. So this may be a little early in the process, but we're going to see a whole bunch of proposals along these lines, because we do have a number of famous people, famous events, that need to be commemorated in the city.
Dennis?
Yeah, sure. When the citizens came to petition me to support this and bring it to council, I thought it was a little unusual. I never met this goose, I don't believe myself, but their innate enthusiasm for the wildlife of Urbana touched me. I've been in the park in early hours of the morning, and I know that there is a regular group that comes every week on a wildlife walk through the park. I found that out when I was setting up for the commemorative shot in the park and trying to find a location for it. I was in the park early on Sunday morning, I think it was on Sunday morning, and 25 people came through with binoculars. So that, I think it's, this is a plaque which celebrates the life of a single bird, yes. You know, we've had other famous birds in our town. We've had a group of turkeys who made the news several occasions, and many people had split opinions about those as well. And I imagine that in the future, there's going to be another bird, or a goose, or a snake, or a rabbit, or something that, you know, somebody will love. Individuals who want to create a memorial or to celebrate an event in the city, I think they have a right to come and petition the city council. And if it does no harm to anyone and is not offensive to life in general, I think we can have the, the spirit of excitement to allow these things to happen.
Okay, any other comments? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Mr. Smythe?
Okay, next up, ordinance number 2008-10-122, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance. This is the Washington Street right-of-way. For the committee, I so move.
Second.
Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Lewis. Any comments? If not, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersong?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Resolution number 2008-10-21R, a resolution determining the amounts of money necessary to be raised by the tax levy for 2008. For the committee, I so move.
Second.
Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Lewis. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Charlie?
Next up, ordinance number 2008-10-124, an ordinance amending Chapter 15 of the Urbana City Code to prohibit nuisance parties. For the committee, I so move.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by?
Barnes.
Barnes. Any discussion? If not, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersong?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. I don't believe we have any special committee reports, reports of officers. Is there anyone who would like to make a report? Bill Gray, Director of Public Works.
Just a couple announcements. First of all, this Friday, October 24th, at 10 o'clock at Fala Road, just north of Walgreens, we plan to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony, first of all, to showcase the new road diet on Fala Road. We've converted to a three-lane cross-section with bike lanes, and this is our first project since the bike master plan's been adopted. And secondly, just to kick off, too, of the beautification efforts that are happening on the Fala Road, the bus shelter is now on the west side, we're waiting for some work on the east side, and there's some other sidewalk-related work that's occurred. And the balance of the, the contracts have been awarded now for landscaping. the balance of the, the contracts have been awarded now for landscaping and for street lighting, so, so a kickoff for that, too. Second item is, last weekend, we had, excuse me, a couple weekends ago now, October 4th, we had a great turnout by U of I students in the I-Help litter cleanup program, and I think in your packet you've seen pictures, but we really appreciate the hundreds of volunteers that helped clean up in Champaign, Urbana, you know, on campus, and it was a great effort and good program. We had some staff members help coordinate and work with the student individuals. The last item, and that was, again, called the I-Help Litter Cleanup Event, which has become an annual event. Last item is this, a week from tonight, actually, there was an event tonight, and there's this coming Monday night, we are distributing what are bike blinking lights, the nightlights for bicycles, they're free. This coming Monday night, during kind of the four-to-eight timeframe, at the Hillen Gateway, Illinois, and Lincoln Street area, we'll be installing these. So, if somebody's riding a bike at that time of day, which is getting toward dusk or evening, and you don't have a light on your bike, we're going to be intersecting with those folks and saying, "Hey, we have, you know, your viola, et cetera, and here's a free light, and we'll install them." We have people that do that, so the cities, MTD, U of I, are, are all coordinating to have volunteers and people to distribute these lights. We helped purchase them, we bought about a thousand, a little over a thousand lights, and, and tonight was also such an event at Goodwin and Gregory Street. We did the same thing, so not trying to move around a little bit, the locations in Urbana, so the second location would be Illinois and Lincoln Avenue. So, just wanted folks to know, if you, if you need lights, blinking light, ride your bike next Monday night in the four-to-eight timeframe over by the Hillen Gateway. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else with a report?
I would, I would be better off.
Yes.
I left County Market tonight, and Philo Road, I hope that the rest of it is as smooth as the part that was done, because, man, I drove down that, and I thought, wow, I feel like I'm on a brand-new area I've never driven down, and I, I mean, it, it looks good, and it drives smooth, so I hope that the rest of it just continues as smoothly. No pun intended.
Charlie?
Yeah, and I, I got to try out my, my bike and trailer through that, through that whole section, you know, for bicyclists, a nice, smooth road, especially when you're pulling a trailer that's, you know, if you try to take it through, through the bumps, it just jumps up and down, so it was really enjoyable. And the bike paths through there worked really nicely. So, I made the rounds from my house to Meyer, down Philo, into downtown, running errands and shopping at various places all over, so it was a lot of fun.
Nice work, thank you. Okay, next we have ordinance number 2008-10-125, an ordinance approving the extension of final plat approval for South Ridge 7 subdivision. Somebody from Community Development, looks like Robert Myers, is here.
Quickly, this is a petition by Carl Hill, who's the developer for South Ridge 7 subdivision, and this plat has been approved by this body. The plat is expired, it's set to expire on November 12th, 2008, and the office is requesting a 180-day extension for the plat for the purposes of completing the infrastructure improvements, so that then, once the infrastructure is built, then the plat can be filed, and there's no bond that's required of the, of the developer. So, this would extend the plat until the middle of next spring.
Heather?
I would move approval of this ordinance.
I'll second that.
Motion by Stevenson, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? If not, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersaw?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.